Class started seven minutes ago. We'll call this meeting of the Jamestown City Council and order for the Monday, August 14th, 2023 work session. The clerk, please pull the, or call the roll.
Councilmember Sheldon?
Here.
Braxton?
Here.
Caruba?
Here.
Reynolds?
Present.
Walter?
Here.
Russell?
Here.
D'Urbelso?
Here.
Beckman?
And President Dolan?
Here.
Thank you. At this time, we give opportunities for the public to speak. If you'd like to address the council tonight, please list your name and address, and limit your remarks to five minutes. Is there anyone who would like to address the council?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm Tom Nelson, 21 Hunter Street. I'm the county legislature representative for District 13, and I serve on the public safety committee. I'm here to address some of the complaints by some of our county employees who parked in the parking ramp. And as it came into the public safety meeting, I believe that's what I heard. I've been contacted by Carmelo Hernandez, the Director of the Department of Mental Health and Hygiene, about this. Unfortunately, I was out of, out of the country last week, and I'm going to talk with him tomorrow morning. But, and I spoke to Chief Jackson about this, and he's well aware of the problem. I think he's a little frustrated because it's not new. It's been going on since past November. And I think what we need to do is address this with some signage, and possibly cameras. If, as I understood from my conversation with Chief Jackson, if we had signs in the parking ramps that said "No trespassing," or said "Patrons only," or something to that effect, then the department could make an arrest and remove these people. I think that's what needs to be done. They need to be held accountable. And I'd like to see some signage. I don't think it'd be that expensive to do that. I saw in the paper, we had a, we just got a $20,000 grant for cameras, and that's something I've asked the mayor, you know, can we use that money towards cameras for the parking garage? If that's, you know, it's a public safety thing, it would seem to make sense. So that's why I'm here, and hoping that something can be done. As I heard your story, that shouldn't happen. That should not happen. So, thank you. Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Oh, do I stay right there?
You're welcome.
Okay. Um, it's not this, in regards to this. I'm approaching regarding a dog, just like last time. So, if you guys.
Excuse me, your name.
Mary Williams, Deers, 173 Baker Street.
Thank you.
I've approached council previously, and we did find resolution the last time, and I'm hoping to do that again today. Through Facebook, I was notified that there is a dog in poor condition currently at 312 East Sixth Street. There has been several calls to Jamestown Police Department, as well as DCO5. The dog, I guess, can't be taken from the property until it's condemned, in which they say they cannot have the housing inspector condemn it without the tenant being the one to call. There are needles throughout the property. It is definitely condemnable. It's deplorable. There is garbage all over the place. The dog is currently struggling with mange, among other health issues, definitely starving being another. Last time, DCO5 was asked to remove a dog, and that did not happen. I have records of the dog being located deceased, so I wanted to attend and speak on behalf, and hopefully save this dog before it ends up in the same predicament. I have lots of proof. I also have a friend saying what Jamestown Police told her earlier today upon speaking with a police officer regarding the situation, basically echoing the fact that they can't do anything about it, and the dog is basically going to sit there because it has mange. They cannot take it. They have nowhere to place it. Throughout, kind of advocating throughout Facebook, I have found citizens willing to help. However, I don't want to put myself in an illegal situation trying to assist, as there is still a technical dog owner. I guess that the house is so deplorable, that four children were also removed from the home within the last couple of months. And if it's not okay for children, I wouldn't say it's safe for a dog. They are not following the leash law. The dog is outside the majority of the time. And again, I have proof of all that on the phone, if you guys need anything further in regards to that.
Sure. Just wondered, have you called the man to say about this dog?
People have, and they were told because of the mange that it cannot be undertaken, and they also do not have space.
I do want to address that, and just let you know that it is a complaint that we received today. And so I have addressed that already with Chief Jackson, as well as our Development Director, Crystal Surtick. My understanding is that we had officers heading to that place earlier this afternoon.
Yes, they went. But they're basically saying there isn't an automatic or foreseeable solution that because the tenant is not the one calling the health department, that they will not be able to condemn that place, is what they told the caller today.
Can I ask, is the dog outside?
The majority of the time, yes.
Because I know a couple times, they've been unable to locate the dog. And they think the dog is inside, but obviously they can't break the door down.
Well, the more that police are getting called and stuff, the more it's getting kind of gray area. However, the dog has been outside three times in two days when my friend has went over to check on it.
So are they taking the dog inside when the police get there?
I believe so. And if she's not capable of taking care of humans, I don't see anything different with this dog. I have a picture. It's full of mange, just skinny. If we wait too much amount of time, this dog is going to be deceased.
Can you give me the address again? Sorry.
312 East Sixth Street?
312.
I think it's 314.
314?
Okay, 314.
Just curious.
Right on the corner of 428 and 86. I was actually there.
DCO5 last week, or week ago Friday, on this. We called because the dog had, had been on Facebook, and we saw the dog.
And then it's getting more dangerous as well. Today, somebody approached the apartment with a pit bull, I guess, trying to retrieve this dog. Not anything against pit bulls, but bringing another dog and other humans to the property, that some deplorable conditions can also result in further injuries. And illegal activity, I mean, at this point, it's a lot of gray area. If the police can't take the dog, technically a rescue or somebody of my stature cannot take the dog. So the dog is sitting there, and it is going to die if something is not done.
And they refuse to surrender it?
I can't say that personally. I don't went there in person. I'd imagine that she is giving a hard time if all the people that have went there previously have stated she's not very easy to get along with. And she does try to pull the dog in when she notices, but otherwise, that dog is outside 24/7, in clear need of assistance.
Follow up.
This is Alice. We've been made aware of this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Does anyone else would like to address the council?
CD Schubert, One O'Seton, Arlington, right near Jamestown. Just to follow up, I, from what we have spoken about, we're concerned about the parking garage. From development of a half an hour, I just learned that there was a meeting last November discussing signage, and that's why the police can't do anything. I'm in shock right now with that for these years. Nothing was done. That's crazy to me. But, just as far as saying what we said a little bit earlier, it's just we're having damage done to our cars, and we're having stuff like that, as I did before.
If I could stand up for a minute?
Could you help me, please?
Carol Wright, 205 Hotchkiss, and I did speak earlier to the Safety Committee. And I bring the issue, because we're in the building. I'm supervising approximately 45 staff who are utilizing the ramp on a daily basis, and they're exposed to unsafe conditions, to unhealthy conditions. But for the larger issue, we have a greater awareness of the ramp and the dangers, and have taken lots of steps to assure our safety, and still have not been safe. And in more than one occasion, where I had a staff person chased out of the ramp by a person, where we come upon people who are in the ramp, sleeping in the ramp, nodding out, where the ramp is uncleanly, the ramp has, you walk over periods of times of needles and defecation. In addition to, one of my staff most recently having all the windows smashed out of her car, creating $3,000 worth of damage. My further concern is this, this is downtown Jamestown. This is supposed to be a block where we can invite the community. The Regulany Civic Center is there. We're trying to expand the city of Jamestown. Sure, we're painting the outside of the ramp with this nice flowery thing and the big thing, but there, nothing's being done on the inside of the ramp. And not only does it pose, you know, safety issues for us, the larger community has no awareness. You're, you're going to have events over at the Regulany Civic Center. People are going in there to, and, and, you know, word hasn't gotten out in that big way to the local community. I, you know, I don't want to say, it's only happening to, you know, the people who are in there multiple days, probably. But, lighting, cameras, people walking through, booths being staffed, or look like they're being staffed, you know, up until eight o'clock at night. The ramp wasn't in this kind of situation. I've, I've worked at the county for 23 years. It's only been the last 18 months or so. And I don't know what's happened with the switch up and how it's being maintained, but it is, there was no graffiti on the walls like there is now. It was, it's never cleaned. You, you know, before, I could complain about the smells of Clorox and ammonia when I was coming down through work, but not, no longer. So, I think if we want to, you know, make Jamestown a place where people come, they have to be able to park safely, not only my staff, but the rest of the community. And I, and I just feel like it's, it's just a matter of time before something really bad happens, you know? And that isn't someone overdosing in the ramp. That's someone even being harmed, you know? I mean, the people that are, homeless people that are sleeping in the ramp are not as much threat as people think that they are, so I'm not going to pose that. We deal with these folks every day. But it's just a situation where you have to do something about it. And I will echo Cindy's concerns. If we, I don't want all these people arrested or in jail, and I don't think we want them crowding up our jails, but if we can escort them out, and there is a deterrent where, you know, you're going to get an appearance ticket, and this is going to happen, and that's going to happen, and they know that there's some follow through, and brighter lighting, and cameras, that might not be the answer, but that is a step that should happen now, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else would like to address the council?
Doug Champ, 225 Long Street, Jamestown, New York. It's, it's great to see citizens come back into this discussion about the community and their needs, because without that, that message doesn't resonate. And the chief said earlier tonight that his part of the bargain was put in play. But the request that was done in November wasn't put in play by administration in terms of making the parking ramp safer and more applicable for people to use it. As I said earlier, you've got a major event coming in here this Thursday. I'm going to it. Chautauqua Symphony Orchestra is coming here. One of the first times that's happened. It'll be sold out. So it gives more credence to what the necessity of doing this is. Now, as far as money goes, the city got $28.1 million, as you all well know, American Rescue Plan. $10 million was for anything. Probably some of that money's still available. So it shouldn't be a financial hit on the city. After all, public safety was one of the major keystones of those funds. Now, that brings me to my, my point that I was going to address tonight, was the inaccuracy and non-timeliness on the city's website about expenditures in American Rescue Plan. The last, and this is, I'm looking at this right now, was last updated February 14th of this year. February 14th. We're now almost through the third quarter. Every quarter, this should have acknowledgement of what's been happening with these funds. The funds are either encumbered, they're spent, or they're unappropriated in some cases. So how are you going to express this to the people of Jamestown, how their money's being used, if the only thing you put in there is from last February? Now, I know they have to do their reporting to the Treasury Department once a year. That's the Treasury Department. This is the Jamestown. So we're woefully behind on presentation, on your website. Now, you're going to have some more actions coming in front of you, the City Council is. The LDC has got to make choices. I would hope the LDC on the non-for-profits will have some type of a non-Rubik's Cube equation. And you'll have to understand that that does not change the dynamics of what the eligibility requirements are for using these funds. City of Jamestown's a recipient. They can award a sub-recipient, but then the beneficiaries under the sub-recipient have to be acknowledged, both by number, both by impact from COVID, and also perpetuation of how that's going to be sustainable. So if that's not being done, then there's, Treasury has recoupment. That means it can recover the money if it's not done appropriately. Now, I've hearkened this over and over again over the last years. And the reason why I do that? We witnessed $10 million in the downtown renewal initiative that went nowhere. Money was spent, $10 million, no accountability. Buildings that were given money are basically foreclosures. So my point is this, if you want to be honest and true, and the administration wants to inform the public with accountability and transparency, why isn't this being done on their website? February 14th, that's the last entry. Is that right, Mayor?
I'm sorry.
Is that right?
Actually, the city reports quarterly to the Treasury Department, and we have not updated the spreadsheet. You are correct.
Why, why hasn't that been part of your program?
Because we haven't had a comptroller in, in months. So we're trying very hard to make that happen.
You have administrator, you have this fellow over here, you've got a grants writer, you've got apartment development, and you're saying that that's okay? We don't have to have this information because we send a report to Treasury?
I never said that. I said that we would update the spreadsheet.
So you're going to do it now?
I'm not going to do it right now during the middle of a meeting, Doug.
You don't want to do it.
Yes. We will update the spreadsheet tomorrow for you.
No, no, it's not for me. It's for the City of Jamestown.
I understand. You can also search the City of Jamestown with the Treasury Department, who updated its last quarterly report at the end of July.
I see that. But, he's true. It's a lot of money that's not allocated. It's there, but you guys are going to get fined for not using the money.
The expenditures have to equate the appropriations, which also has to equate what's dispersed. And you've got balances all over the place here. Now, that may be unfathomable, because you're going to spend the money down, but just remember, there's got to be a pathway to explain this to the Jamestown population, how you're using their funds. That's my point.
Sir, just a point of clarification too, Doug, on the, the JODC and the nonprofits. There is a rubric, and probably one of the reasons why it has taken so long is that there have been, obviously, there's been more money that's been asked for than been allocated. And so there has to been, there, there has been given a rubric, a scoring sheet. Again, everything that you've brought up, we have discussed at JODC, and it's been out there. So when the decision's made, they'll be able to show who's getting the money, and how it was determined, and under what percentage, and why, what they had to go through, and their need. And part of that was what they went through for COVID, just like for the residents that had to fill out applications, that had to meet criteria. The same thing will be for the nonprofits.
So you're saying the LDC has ranked them?
The, the administration has ranked them. The LDC board has reviewed them, but no decision has been made as of yet. But there will be.
There's been different options or scenarios that the administration has provided to the board for us to look at, which we, we will eventually vote on. Also, what several members of the board have asked for is that all this information be provided to, and I think it's already been provided to the entire council, because as you know, anything over $100,000 has to come back to the full council anyways, for a vote. So I was one of those individuals that asked that all that information come to the full council sooner than later, because I didn't want a council member to get this information the night before a vote, or five hours before a vote on this large sum of funds. So I want everyone in the council to be educated, a wealth rider to a vote. So that's all taking place. And then also with the, with the different scenarios, four different options.
Is there going to be a blood port caravan attached to all these applications? Without this money, the project will go forward?
That was one of the questions that was asked, is what the impact for each of the nonprofits, and what impact it would have on them if they didn't get the allocation that they asked for. So that's in the process now. Thank you. Does anyone else would like to address the council?
Is there anyone else would like to address the council? Yes, please.
My name is Jeanette Jones. I live at 66 West 11th Street. My concern is the entrance to the Jackson Taylor Park. Okay, the sign is on 13th Street, and the crosswalk is on 13th Street. And I understand that the sign is on the city property. So I understand that. And I think the sign should be put on the corner of 11th and Washington, because actually, that is the entrance to the park. And if you stand at 13th Street in Washington, you cannot see all of the additions to the park. Okay, when the skate park was there, that was fine. But you've seen the skate park and what used to be the baseball diamond, whatever, it used to be the baseball diamond. And I guess there was going to be addition to it, to the river walk? But I guess that's put on hold or whatever, whatever, I don't, I don't know. But since the skate park is there, all you have is dirt, where it was. So people coming into Jamestown see this nice signage. They come there and they say, oh, my goodness, what park? Hmm, I don't see any park. You go 100 yards or 100 feet or whatever, I don't know how much distance. You go to 11th Street, you stop, oh, there's the park. There's a pavilion, the concession stand, the playground, the parking, and whatever. That should be the entrance to the park. Not only that, it should be a crosswalk. I know that state road there. And I live on 11th Street, and I only live two houses up the street. I see daily kids going down, almost getting hit by the traffic on the street. Me, myself, I go down there. I have to get my neighbor, someone just happened to be walking, have to stop the traffic so I can get across the street. Just this last week, when they had the Gospel Fest there, I had to get people to stop the traffic so that I could go. Even the mayor, when I was down here for that meeting, he stopped the traffic and walked me across the street. I think that there should be a stop, a crosswalk there, or at least a caution sign, like you did at the hospital. I, you know, I don't know if Savannah or, excuse me, 11th Avenue is a state road or whatever. And I know the permissions are from the state, and I guess Ken, I don't know if Ken is here or whatever, but I talked to him, and I guess he went and called, left messages for the state to see what could be done to get a crosswalk painted on there, because that is state road there. Since they were doing painting of the green and the whatever, which I think is great for the bicycle people, and the cars too. I've seen a lot of cars stop now, since they understood what is that green. They understand now that it's for the bikes to turn left or right, so they understand that now. But I really do think that it needs to be there. Okay, now, the corner of 10th, there's a stoplight there. If that child had not got hit over 25 years ago or whatever, the petition for the people, that stoplight would not be there. That light would not be there. So it would be a straight, whatever. You stand in a corner of 10th Street, you cannot see the park from standing on the corner of 10th Street. Standing on the corner of 11th Street, you see everything. When there's something going on like this last weekend, they gave out everything. Where did everybody park? 11th Street. Where did everybody get their food at? The concession stand. Where is that at? 11th Street. When everybody went to the pavilion to get their things at, where'd they get that at? From 11th Street at the park. When they go to the playground, where do they go to to get to the playground? From 11th Street. Some kids that come from past 11th, 13th, 14th, 15th, will go around 13th and cross it down, but you cannot see the park. So the true opening to the park is at 11th in Washington. If they, the Jackson Taylor, if they were alive now, they would not approve of this at all, because their names are saying, hey, come to the park, look at this dirt here. This is not what they stood for. They did not stand for this dirt here at all. And I'm just saying, since it is a state, you guys have no control, and I know no one has control over it. I, myself, would like to do a petition, send it to the state. Call Channel 4, call Channel 2, get the state aware of this, because it is a hazard. I see every day, oh, my gosh, these kids are going to get hit. These little kids are going to get hit, even though their brothers and sisters help them across the street, but it comes this close. Truck, tractor, trailers, even though we have AutoZone right there, or not AutoZone, but they, right there, and their tractor and trailers, they go over there. And I'm glad I spoke up about that, because they are doing what they can do. They're great neighbors now, instead of having them pulling down by the street, blocking my driveway, everybody's driveway and everything. So they are good neighbors, but there's, there are tons of trucks. Because that is a state road, and I'm not saying anything, but please, let's get a caution sign, caution people to notice that you may have to stop, be aware that children, or even get a sign to say, children at play, or something. Have them notice something, I don't know. Make it purple and green, or, I don't know, red's not the color anymore, because everything is red. So let's change the color. Just get something, children at play beware, children may cross. Let's put a sign, something like that, since we can't do anything to the state's road. Let's just get some kind of signage down there or something, since we can't do anything. But if we could do that, that would help. I'm not a child anymore, but put a handicap person may cross. I don't know. Just make it a different color besides red, okay? Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to address the council? Seeing none, we'll move on to our committee reports. We'll go housing. Marie?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm asking right now. I'm going to turn it over to Director of Development, Crystal Curtis, to give the report so you can hear her. It's going to be too hard for me to y'all.
Okay. So, in the housing committee, we talked about properties that are condemned, the number of properties that are condemned. I did share a report with the housing committee members. Currently, we have 255 condemned properties. A number of those are also on our demolition list. One of the questions was, where are we with the contract with the land bank and getting those properties going? We actually are moving forward. We approved a bid package for the first round of demolitions, and the next round will be ready to go immediately following that first one. So we are bidding out a number of demolition properties at one time in hopes of being able to attract a larger number of demolition contractors. In the past, we've tried it a few different ways, but in the past, or recent past, we've done them one at a time. So we're, we're hoping that by grouping them, we'll be able to, to get additional bidders. We anticipate that once those bids start going and those properties start getting demolished, it'll be quick at first, but it may slow down a bit or seem like it's slowing down a bit for a number of reasons. So to demolish properties, there's a whole process we have to go through. We have to have them first survey for asbestos and lead. If they come back positive for those contaminants, they have to be remediated. There has to be a period of air monitoring before they can come down. Once they've been remediated, they can, and the air monitoring process is concluded, then they can, can be demolished. So it's not a very fast process, I guess is my point. But we will start to see some pretty quick movement on some of those that have already been abated. So we'll see a few come down probably in the next month or so, and then they'll continue to trickle. What else did I talk about?
We talked about the 19A contractor?
Yes, yes. So we, we did hire a 19A contractor. He started last week. We're very, very excited. He has a background in construction for decades. So this past week, I, I actually was out of town last week for a conference, but he and my team put together a strategy to start prioritizing kind of an initial intervention to those properties that we have on our 19A list, properties that need to have their, their grass cut, cleaned up, exteriors buttoned up and secured, and then start to look at any immediate damage control. So if there's a leaking roof or there's broken windows, to get those taken care of, and that's kind of the priority. And then in the, you know, besides that, we're working on putting together just sort of the documentation. So applications for the program, writing all the policies and procedures, and getting that ready to roll out as soon as we possibly can.
And the other, New York State rental?
Oh, yes. Yes, this actually is exciting too. So we have been, as you probably recall, have been working on a rental inspection, vacant property ordinance, and updating the nuisance ordinance, just to give that a little bit more teeth. So, and then in addition to the ordinances that we presented last month, that will be bringing back for a vote at the voting session. So with that though, the rental, rental inspection ordinance, New York State is actually going to be mandating that every municipality does them. We aren't quite sure what their timeline is yet, but as we've had a rental inspection ordinance in the works, we are hoping to present that, excuse me, shortly, and use that as a way to get that going and be ready for when the state actually formally mandates it. We have been working with the county health department on a number of things, and the state will actually mandate the health department as the agency that has to implement that inspection ordinance. So part of our, as we're developing our process, we will be working directly with them to include them in that process. So we're, we're hoping that we'll be able to add some additional inspectors, not code enforcement certified necessarily, but inspectors that can do some of those inspections that will be part of just a typical rental inspection.
And the increase in bench warrants.
Did we put that in the record?
Yes, you did.
So we now have seen successfully three total bench warrants issued. So last, not this last Friday, but the Friday prior, we, the judge actually issued two bench warrants, which we consider to be a win. We, we think that that sends a very clear message that if you do not respect the court, you do not respect the authority of the court or of the Department of Development, or of the Police Department, or the Fire Department, that you will be held accountable. And if it means that you are brought in on a bench warrant, then that's what that means. So we're working closely with the Police Department to try and make sure that when those bench warrants are issued, that they are served quickly and we're able to, to hold people accountable in a quicker fashion.
And the only other thing we had was a couple of citizens came in to talk about their frustration with how long a lot of these things take to get handled and processed. Right now, there are 850 open cases with the Department of Development, which means they've been reported, some have to go back and be redone. So nothing can get done very quickly, and that's frustrating for everybody. We also brought up about, with only having two full-time code enforcement officers, one who is off on medical leave who has returned, they felt that this council needs to look at how we could put more people into the Department of Development and Code Enforcement.
Just a brief question. You, you said about the nuisance ordinance. Are you expecting to, to vote this month on it?
I don't know. I don't think so, I'm ready to vote on that one. The one that we are hoping to have a vote on is the quality of life ordinance. So the ability for code enforcement officers to directly ticket for high grass, jungle green.
Can I just ask you a, a brief question? Has the city court judges been in discussion with you on that and the legalities of it?
They have received it, and so we are waiting on comment back from them, which as far as we didn't get, get it to a vote last.
Concerns brought to me about the legislative branch usurping the ability of the judicial branch and how that would work in terms of being able to directly fine people without the judicial involvement on that. Just a question.
Sure.
I want to make sure. I want to make sure.
Our judicial branch?
No, I didn't.
Yeah, so we, we, go ahead, Elliot.
Yeah, if I will say, in the charter, I'm looking at the code, the judicial branch does control the direct fines for VTL matters. There is no evidence that they controlled it for code enforcement matters. With that being said, I have discussed the amount of fines on code enforcement matters, and there's been no formal report issued to Crystal. However, the general consensus is that they would like a ladder system, i.e. starting out with a small fine and then going up from there.
I just want to make sure that what we, if we're going to do something, I'm, again, I think we're all in favor of doing something with a little more aggressive nature to it, but I just want to make sure that what we're doing is, you know, we're not doing anything that steps above our responsibility as a legislative and executive branch.
Well, we can't, we can't issue fines that are above and beyond what New York State law allows. And so I think ultimately, it is still up to a judge to agree that that fine is acceptable.
There are two cities in New York that have issued the same type of legislation.
Okay, I just want to make sure.
So just, just to clarify for City Council, that the legislation was modeled after two cities that have implemented those.
Incorporated part of Rutherford.
And we have reached out to those cities to provide you all some feedback on how that is going as well, before you vote.
I know it's challenged now, there's no case law against it.
Not to our knowledge, so far.
Just want to make sure.
Yeah, absolutely.
And that houses, how many are there?
255.
How many houses do you have sleeping to be torn down?
I believe 70, what did I say, 78, 79?
78. 78.
And they'll be torn down in the winter too.
Oh, yeah. In fact, they may actually pick up a little bit in the winter, because a lot of the contractors that do demolition work actually work outside, do, you know, some, some kind of construction or excavation or paving. So the winter time is, is probably when they'll be able to move a little bit quicker even.
And when you put those out to bid, are you talking about putting out a conglomerate houses off the bid?
Yeah.
How far out do you go for these bids? Is it just local, or is it?
No, we'll, we'll send it up further. Our hope is, because locally, we really only have three contractors that regularly bid, and especially with the abatement part of it, there are only certain contractors locally that are certified to do that work. So we want to look somewhat outside the area. We, we would still like to keep it as close to home as possible, but, you know, if there are other contractors in Dunkirk, in the Buffalo area, Oleane, that could be, having a larger package would allow them, it would just make it more worth it to them cost-wise, to do a number at a time.
Just assuming that there is asbestos in a, in a house, because pretty much most are on the habit, what's the average rate right now to a house down and has asbestos in it?
Approximately 30,000. It can get as high as close to, we've seen as close to 50. And, you know, something without is more like 10 to 15. But 30 is about the average.
Do you have money budgeted for that?
Yes.
Outside of?
Kindly allocated by all of you through our fund. We also have, so we also have 110, I think is our max that we can use for, from HUD, from our CDDG funding. And that differs depending on the dollar amount we get in our annual allocation, because it's based on a percentage. And then we get an annual allocation set aside by the city, that's budgeted by the city. And that's been around 100 each year. But if you recall, over the last few years, that has been eaten up in one fire, because we've had a few catastrophic fires, so.
You could use some more money.
Absolutely. But also, we- But also remember, depending on where the funding comes from, we can only get through demolition so fast. So we want to make sure that if, if we have to get things demolished within a certain timeframe using whatever funding, that we're actually able to do it, because we don't want to give money back. So it's, it's a balancing act, I guess, is my point, yeah.
Okay, we're good for.
That's it.
There was a finance committee meeting, so we'll move on to public safety, Brent.
Thank you, Mr. President. We did have several of the employees from Mental Hygiene come speak about the Spring Street ramp. Putting to the people who spoke here, to everybody, as well as the owner of a vehicle who had sustained over three thousand dollars of damage to the vehicle. Multiple broken windows, damage to terminal window. We also had Chief Jackson address to us, saying that he did have a meeting dating back November twenty-first, twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Recommending several things to improve security in the parking ramps, including the signs that were mentioned, cameras, lights, and more police patrols. And Colonel Chief, the only thing that's been implemented so far has been the extra patrols by his officers. So it's something we need to address. Look forward to a future discussion quickly. We had several resolutions. The first is EPU to be requested installed one new one hundred and fifty watt equivalent LED fixture at EPU pole one nine zero nine five, the corner of Forest Avenue and Fairfield Avenue. That was approved. We also had a resolution of accepting the, the twenty-twenty-three Edgeworth Memorial Justice Assistant Grant Program grant for twenty thousand six hundred and ninety-four dollars to utilize for traffic cameras. This was approved. And we also had a resolution authorizing the city to enter an agreement with Chautauqua County Health Department specifically to operate its mobile health vehicle in the city of Jamestown over the period of August first, twenty-twenty-three, to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six. That was approved as well. We did have several block parties. The first is the Jewel Place Block Party, held Tuesday, September fifth, from five to nine P.M. A little rainy day on Wednesday, September sixth. This one's been going on for approximately nineteen years, except for pandemic times. That was approved. And we had a request for the Stowe Street Jamaican Block Party. This is between East Second and Faulkner Street. Held Saturday, August nineteenth, twelve to nine P.M. There was some discussion. There was a letter written by, who I believe is the only person who owns their property and lives there. Every other property owner is a rental property there. Discusses some of the problems from last year's block party there. He wanted this party not to go on, because there was underage drinking, underage marijuana consumption, loud music, profane language in the music. And then when he woke up, there was garbage in his front garden and his driveway. So after some of this discussion and modifications, this block party is approved. To be held between noon and five P.M. With additional police presence to make sure that people are behaving themselves in a proper manner. Third block party, always the Crater Avenue Block Party. Be held Sunday, September twenty-fourth, from noon to five P.M. On a rainy day of October first, twenty-twenty-three. That was approved as well. Finally, we have the special event application, the Annual Dan Feather Memorial Five K, to be held Sunday, September third. The races actually run between nine-thirty and eleven-thirty, but they set up at seven and shut down right after that race is done. Held in conjunction with our annual Liberty Festival, and that was approved. And that was all we have.
You want to public works, raining, we have a few things there.
Yeah, I had a group question before we move on about, I know we were talking about the signs. And I just wanted to ask the mayor and his staff how quickly we can come up with the signs for the parking ramp and when they need to be put up.
Yeah.
I wasn't made aware of the, the meeting in, in November with the administration and the police chief. Tonight's the first time I've heard about that meeting. Maybe I missed it. I'm just wondering, how long would it take to get these signs put into place? And also, if the administration can come forward to us and give us an idea of what cameras would cost, maybe some estimates.
Well, Councilman Russell, let me give you the estimates right now.
Thank you.
So to answer your questions, advocate.
President.
So to answer your questions, a couple of things. Number one, I was going to have some comments from the mayor. First and foremost, the signage has already been ordered. The chief did work with Mr. Raizer to develop those signs as well as to run across a similar process we use with the railroad to apprehend trespassers. So we did work through that. I believe they're on order. Yes, those are on order. The second item that you asked for was information about the cameras and lighting. We did have that meeting in November. We did not receive the final quotes until about two weeks ago. We had had at least three agencies looking at both ramps for lighting as well as cameras. We didn't receive all of those quotes. I'm giving you guys a package of those quotes right now. The lowest bid for both lighting and cameras for both of the ramps is two hundred and forty-six thousand four hundred and ninety-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. There are other quotes there to give you the package. I will say that I am very sympathetic for some of the things that are going on in the, the ramps. I do know and can tell you that a lot of the issues we have been experiencing in those ramps are from juveniles, which has been a major concern, because it's not just been the ramps from some of the juveniles. However, if the City Council would like to go forward with cameras and lighting, I've put together all of the packages. This exceeds what we have in contingency. So we will need to try to find where you would like that to come from, whether that's bonding, a mix of bonding contingency, or rescue plan funds. So that's for you all to take a look at. Like I said, we had three vendors, and it's actually quite a process to run cameras in those, those facilities. The other thing is, like I said, the signage, as soon as we get it, we'll, we'll put it up. We've also been trying to work with Premium Parking to try to figure out a better solution for the way they manage some of those things, some of the issues. Obviously, there's been a lot of changes that have occurred, not necessarily Premium Parking, but just with the use of those facilities. And so we want to make sure that they are safe for everyone. And obviously, we have been working on trying to put together those quotes. And we'll, yeah, happy to work with any of the council members to try to find the funds to, to get that.
I make a suggestion that since we just got the information, look at the packet. If you have any questions, you can talk to the mayor or the staff about that and think about some ideas. I know we do have some rescue money left, not much, but we'd have enough to cover it. Or if you would prefer to put it in a bond or you'd prefer to take it out of, as much out of contingency, I know that could put us in a tough spot, and it's still, what, five months to go, four and a half months to go. So that would be, you know, those are some options there. Obviously, I think it's an important thing. We've, we've spent a lot of money on public safety, and this is just an extension of public safety. And again, if we expect people to come to Jamestown, visit and work down here and be, feel safe, we have to do something. And I'll make my editorial, because I'm really kind of frustrated about it. The comment was made, this has gotten worse in the last year and a half or so. It's really kind of frustrating and really disheartening to think that we have to spend taxpayer money to prevent behaviors that are unacceptable, whether it's to do this, to clean up stuff. I had a constituent the other day who was talking about watching parks people pick up garbage downtown. We have a receptacle every block, but people can't be responsible enough to use them. So we have to spend our time as city employees, spend their hard-earned time cleaning up after people who are responsible. And this is just another extension of it, so. I mean, it has to be done, but it's, it's just frustrating that we have to spend a quarter of a million dollars because we can't trust, whether they're juveniles, whether they're adults, whoever they are, to behave and to not create this, that people can't work and go downtown and feel relatively safe, not have cars vandalized, not have needles, and not have garbage, and not have graffiti. And it's just, it's, it's another extension of frustration that we probably all share. But that's my editorial, so I'll leave it at that, that, yes.
Public safety, poor world of public, or Randy. Jen, there was an email out about a military salute held on Second Street. Did that gain any traction from Lee Ann?
Now, we, we forwarded you, it was late this afternoon. We forwarded you a response to that.
Yeah, something we need to address is, what's the, the hell was the nineteenth? Chief, did you get it?
Yes, you'll see my response in your email.
All right, okay.
I have a question about the cameras. What would be cameras in the elevators?
Do you remember?
That, that's, that's a scary question.
Inside the.
Inside the elevators. You never know what's gonna, I don't know how y'all feel, but them elevators are scary.
We can always, we can make sure that that's.
I didn't hear a complaint about the North Main Street ramp. There was vandalism there, too.
So which one, I'm sorry?
North Main Street and Second.
Between Tier One.
Yeah. Traffic camera there at the corner of Second and North Main, would cover that or not?
It's a little bit different, because it's not quite as large.
Right.
But it will take a little. It's more surface part.
Didn't need a lot of ramp, but it's just, Dan can tell us, right? The vandalism in the parks. We spend thousands and thousands of dollars on park equipment and playgrounds and upgrading our bathrooms, and for what? They get destroyed.
Were cameras up there?
It's just, I mean, the cameras, they're not probably going to stop it, but they could help, because you might be able to see something, catch someone. It might be a deterrent for some, it may be a, a tool to apprehend and, and that way. But it's just, it's just frustrating to think that this is what we have to do today. We, we spend good, hard-earned money that just gets, have to be rebuilt. New playground equipment, new bathroom fixtures, you know. How many times do you guys have to go downtown and pick up garbage all day long in the streets instead of doing things that they could be a lot more productive doing? But anyways, okay. You good? Randy, public works? It's been a long day, that's why I had to come out.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had seven resolutions, and all of which are going to be also appear in the Finance Committee on eight twenty-one. Okay, so I just want to get that for all, all seven of them. Number one was resolved that the mayor and Mark Raizer, acting director of Public Works and acting director of Parks and Rec, be and hereby authorized to direct purchase for the Parks Department from MTE Equipment Solutions. One, twenty-twenty-three Smithco Sandstar four Baldfield rumor to replace unit number two fifty for a total not to exceed twenty-nine thousand six hundred and eighteen dollars. And we had discussion, that vehicle, there is two of them, and the other one, this would replace, is aging. And, and that was approved, and so that's what this second one is for, because the other one's getting worn down. Number two, resolve that the mayor and he hereby is authorized to execute change order number one with our Patty Concrete of Jamestown for concrete work on Bridge Street Reconstruction twenty-twenty-three on the change order dated August second, twenty-twenty-three, and with following amount of twenty-four thousand nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. And that is approved. Number three, resolve that the mayor be and hereby authorized to execute change order number two with our Patty Concrete for concrete work on West Eleventh Street, Lafayette, and West Tenth Street. Total reconstruction based twenty-twenty-three based on the change order dated July tenth, twenty-twenty-three, and a decrease amount of nine hundred dollars. And it was for twenty ton of stone for a decreased fee. The way the bid worked out, the final bid was for a hundred and thirty-eight thousand eight hundred and fifty-six dollars. Subject to approval for the, from the Corporation Council as to form. Number four, whereas on January twenty-second, two thousand and two, the Jamestown City Council adopted a resolution that effective immediately until further notice instituted a hiring freeze for the city. And then whereas on November twentieth, two thousand and six, the Jamestown City Council adopted a resolution to extend the freeze to any change in employment from part-time to full-time status. And whereas has become apparent that within the Department of Public Works, an effort to effectively manage the city's day-to-day responsibilities in a cost-effective manner, it is in the city of Jamestown's best interest to lift the hiring freeze for a certain position. Now therefore be it. And resolve that effective immediately, the city of Jamestown hereby suspends the hiring freeze instituted by Resolution two hundred two oh one C O three and authorized for the filling of the fossil possible position due to the essential nature, and that is a fleet maintenance mechanic for the position in the Public Works Department. And this position is vacant as a result of a twenty-twenty-three budget allocation. That was approved. Number five, whereas on January twenty, twenty-twenty-second, two thousand and two, the Jamestown City Council adopted a resolution that effective immediately until further notice, a hiring freeze for the city. And then whereas on November twentieth, two thousand and six, the city adopted a resolution to extend the freeze to any change from employment from part-time to full-time. Whereas it has become apparent that the Parks Department, an effort to effectively, effectively manage the city's day-to-day responsibilities in a cost-effective manner, it is in the city's best interest to lift the hiring freeze for a certain position. Now therefore be it. Resolve that effective immediately, the city of Jamestown hereby suspends the hiring freeze and authorize the filling of the possible following position due to the essential nature of the position, and that would be a labor in the Parks Department. And this position is vacant as a result of a retirement. And that was approved. Number six, that Mark Raizer, acting director of Public Works, is hereby authorized to attend the Nikon Public Works Training School to be held at Lake Class at New York, school to be held October fifteenth to nineteenth of twenty-twenty-three. Expenses paid pursuant to Section seventy-seven B of the General Municipal Law, subject to the approval of Corporation Council as to form. And we approve that. And the last one, resolve that the mayor be and hereby is authorized to enter an agreement with Chautauqua County to allow the, Chautauqua County to operate its mobile health vehicle in the city of Jamestown for the period of August first, twenty-twenty-three to June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, subject to approval of Corporation Council as to form. And that was approved.
Has that been approved by the county? Is that down in front of the county?
I think they're running it. Aren't they counting?
Yeah, I don't know if that's gone through the legislature yet. We just finalized the. Yeah, I don't think so. We just finalized the contract with them, and I think you guys got it. That's correct. They're running the similar things, I think, with other municipalities as well as part of their grant agreement for that mobile unit.
Yeah, because I've seen it in the paper, where it's up and running.
They do not have their license yet. They're still waiting from the state. But they are, they can do things outside of the, the unit, which is why they're taking the places and doing tables out front.
And that would be it?
Okay, thank you. Up to you.
Okay, I have a couple items just for updates for the City Council. Some of them have already been checked off the list, so great job, guys. First and foremost, bus patrol. So the stop signs on bus, school bus. Uh, so the, uh, stop signs on bus, school buses across the city. This was approved quite a long time ago, uh, and it is finally rolling out. Uh, we have heard that their install date for school bus cameras on the school buses is September third through the twenty-first. They will start the mandatory warning period, September fifteenth is the estimated date. Anything after October, they will start issuing tickets. Um, we are planning on trying to do, uh, press release and information to the public about the dangers of passing school buses and the fact that you could receive a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar ticket for passing a school bus in the city of Jamestown. So more information will be coming. We plan on, um, working through that, uh, as of, right now, and expect, uh, installs on the buses, uh, shortly. Uh, the other item I wanted to note was there was a question about the, uh, Bird scooters and bikes. Our understanding is an operator, uh, has been found and they are going through training. Uh, once they, uh, believe that the operator has, uh, fully gone through the training and they're, they're happy with it, then we'll talk about, uh, finalizing the pilot program in the city. Um, we have also worked with Bird to, uh, indicate areas where we do not want bikes or scooters to go. So those things are starting to be loaded into their system as well. Um, we do not have a go-live date yet, but wanted to give you all an update because I know some of you had asked, uh, the last time they're not. Uh, all, a couple of their updates, uh, we do have and will bring to, uh, the council the finalized, uh, bond resolutions. Uh, so for those, we have a little bit of time, but we will need to know how much of that we may want to take from American Rescue Plan Funds and others to reduce down the bond, but that is the municipal building bond. We met with our bond council, uh, finalized some of those resolutions, and so we just need to finalize numbers, uh, and run that through council for the fleet maintenance building, this building and the Fenton building. I also wanted to note that we approved a while back a Knox Key System. There's, uh, keys for various buildings across the city, uh, and I'm happy to report, I heard from, uh, Deputy Chief Coon, who's behind me, yes, he stepped off for a minute, uh, that we have completed that installation of the Knox Key System across the city. I don't know, Chief, anything you want to say about that?
Uh, just a little update. So the Knox System is a, it's like a key safe that can be installed on a building. Now, the city of Jamestown does not purchase those on behalf of a building owner. Um, it is certainly up to the building owner to purchase them if they wish to do so. However, we can provide information from our Fire Prevention Office to educate persons interested in doing that in lieu of the fire department having the keys that are kept within the fire department. This places the keys, the master keys for the building onsite and the owner obviously would have access to those as well. It helps to keep those keys updated. Uh, previous to installing a system, uh, which was purchased through resolution by council, um, we're using American Rescue Plan Funds. Uh, it was a, it's a key secure system now that's been installed in all of our frontline apparatus. That allows the keys to have accountability and ensure that those keys certainly don't become lost. So it's a, a longstanding system that we've had in place, having the Knox System, but we previously did not have keys available on all frontline apparatus. So that program has been completed and our, uh, engine companies and ladder company have been, uh, using those assigned keys like that to gain access to buildings that otherwise they would have to wait for key holders to respond to.
Thank you. Uh, and further update, uh, the, um, tanks are scheduled to be removed at the, uh, CHQ Transit, formerly Karts Building across the street. Uh, my understanding is that they have secured the contractors as well, so once the tanks are removed, the rest of the contracting work, uh, will start on the building across the street, uh, for the, uh, CHQ Transit hub. You may have also noticed that they have, uh, skinned their buses, uh, for various parts of the county, uh, so we're really excited about their, uh, their new buses and their new, uh, look, as well as the trolley. If any of you went to the, uh, car show, you may have seen that they have their new trolley out, which will be a, uh, specialty line here from the city to other parts of the county. And then we've also been working with CHQ Transit, uh, to develop specialty bus, uh, stop signs throughout the city. So to promote visibility of the routes across the city, uh, we have been working with them to develop these specialty signs. Uh, so once those have been finalized, we'll, uh, we've, uh, we've worked with them and our planners have actually plotted out bus stops across the city, uh, for us to make that more visible as well as a way to contact them and utilize that bus service. So we're working through that process. Uh, fleet building update. The, we are waiting on a large electrical panel, uh, to complete the remainder of the fleet building. Uh, so once we receive that, uh, we can kind of move forward with everything else along with the bond to finalize the rest of it. Uh, but that's kind of the holdup right now is this large electrical panel that is on back order. Yeah. Um, splash pads, uh, there's been a question about, uh, how we were doing on splash pads. Just so you all know, we placed an order for all of the equipment back in June. Uh, that is, that we were notified a couple of weeks ago has been on back order. We anticipate that we will receive the equipment, uh, towards the beginning of September, and once that happens, uh, we can then get on the contractor's schedule to finalize, uh, the install. And we've also done the soil testing at Jackson Taylor Park, uh, so we are waiting on the final analysis on the soil samples, uh, that were taken at the park. Still working on that. Um, from the finance update, uh, I've heard, uh, from Joe Belito as well, from, uh, Carol, that we are almost done with twenty-twenty-two, so expect a report, uh, to city council about final twenty-twenty-two numbers, uh, in short order. Uh, the senior citizen home improvement program is sixty-six percent complete, based on what we've already allocated and money that has gone out the door as well as projects. Uh, so we're really excited that that's, that's chugging along and we're seeing a lot of improvements in various senior homes. Uh, we talked about the mobile health unit, so I'll spare you that. And then the last one that we will have is, we're currently working with, uh, Premium Parking, formerly known as All Pro. Um, we have, our RFP is actually up for, uh, parking management, uh, so they were one of the, uh, bidders, uh, in fact, the lowest bidder, uh, and we have been working with them and hopefully we'll have the RFP information out to city council so we can finalize the RFP on, uh, parking management. Um, we've asked to, uh, change some of the way we do parking so that we have people that are more visible throughout the ramp checking license plates instead of just at a booth. So we have been working with Premium, uh, who was the, the, uh, most competent bidder in the RFP process, uh, to try to, uh, define that, uh, before we move forward with the final award. And on that note, I have two executive session items, one related to labor contract negotiations and one related to the sale of real property of which a public discussion could impact the value thereof. Um, there is no action to be taken, however, I will note, uh, that, uh, we will need to move the city council, and this is for the media as well, uh, to the mayor's conference room, uh, since we will have, uh, our attorney joining us via Zoom. Uh, and so if the media has any, wants to talk to any council members afterwards, we'll be over in that room.
Have a motion? Will be over here, all in favor? All right.